Tēnā koutou ka tūa, ko Rachel Rees tokoingoa, ko Rauti Koro Mato Fakatu. Anamaharemā, welcome to this joint shareholders committee. We have a recently brief agenda and we'll start today with Karakia. Kia tōmā te maranatanga, kia tōmā te rangi mai rerei, kia tōmā te tikaha, meti aravam o tēne koupapa, hūrerei, tākei rei, kia ora. And let's be grounded in clarity, let's be peaceful, let's be strong and loving at this issue and bind together. So be it, work to do today. So kia ora, good to see you all. I haven't received any apologies today. I don't believe, I'm just looking for my little checkerboard to find councillor McGurk. I haven't got an apology from Brian. Has anyone received an apology from Brian? No, okay. All right, well, housekeeping is per normal. Using the usual Zoom protocols, we'll hand up function and we'll use the tick function just for voting today. We have, as I said, received no apologies at this stage, so I'll come back to that item in a few minutes. Here we go, here he goes. No apologies needed. No public forum. Any interests that we need to declare today in relation to the matters that we're discussing? Not aware of any interests. Just in terms of late items, there is one item for discussion. There's no decision that we will, in relation just to the independent director appointment and process. And so Tim and I had, we'll just come to that after we get to the item on the agenda. We just wanted to update you on where we were getting to with that process. So it's just an update and a bit of a question about an approach that we could take with the appointment of the independent director. So Timmy, you have here that we do that sort of as either part of the meeting or would you rather we close the meeting and then discuss it?
Probably best discussed if you close the meeting and then just have a discussion.
That was, that was what I was thinking we'd do, yeah. I won't do it as an item, so just noting that there is something there. Okay, so items on today's agenda, we have the director report in relation to Nelson Airport Limited appointment of directors. So I'll just hand it over to the officers to introduce that report and, you know, open for questions.
Sorry, we need to go into confidential.
Oh, we do. I forget, I thought I'm on Zoom, I just forget we're all, we're doing that. Thank you, thank you, Judeine. If I had the wrong shape in front of me, I don't remember that. Who would like to move? And we don't have anyone staying, do we? No, okay, moved by Barry, signified Judeine. And nobody's staying? It's not, no, we don't have any externals, that's fabulous, I'll put the motion.
No one can hear any of us?
Oh, you want to do that, okay. Are you in a place where nobody can hear what you're saying or see what you're doing? If you could just give me a physical thumbs up or something, that would be great, if you could now.
Yep, yeah, somewhere where no one else can, maybe.
Thanks, Tim. Could you just, now we'll just do the going into confidential, so it's still a little voting. Is anyone against, that's carried? Thanks, thanks Judeine, it's a problem, I was working at home, you feel like you're in confidential business all the time. Righty ho, we have now got the item which has the airport directors. And Nikki, is that your, is that your paper or Mike's?
Through the Madam Mayor, it's my paper. So just to a brief introduction. As the paper outlines, there'll be two vacancies this year in relation to Paul Steer and Catherine Taylor. Stepping down in October, and one of the things that we were keen to look at was, was obviously transitioning a board chair, a potential board chair into that role. So the recommendations in front of you are to appoint an extra director now. You know, sort of immediately after the constitutional changes, as well as another director in October. So we'll be running one extra director for a few months and that requires us to change the constitution. And that, within the constitution currently of the Nelson Airport, it specifically says, say that there are five directors. And, you know, best practice would be that you have a range, so. In clause 16.1 of the constitution, it says a minimum of four and a maximum of six. So we have to make that change to the constitution to allow an additional director for a period of time. And that's a recommendation through to each council, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Nikki. And look, I just, just for background in relation to this appointment process, the panel was, Tim and myself and Matt Clark in this instance, because Paul Steer is really getting ready to stand down for the role as chair. The case term is concluding soon. And just in terms of background, in terms of the chair's role. Matt Clark has recently been appointed to be, as the chief executive of Wellington Airport. And, and the, and the thinking around the board, we didn't think that was appropriate for Matt to be coming into the chair's role. And McDonald wasn't considered to be somebody that would be coming into the chair's role either. So that is the purpose of getting somebody up and now, to see if they would be able to transition into the chair's role. If not, then the board will obviously make that, they'll make that call. But I've found that, I've always found the boards are pretty straight up about whether they, you know, how that's going. Then I guess we always have the option, if we had to retain a director for longer, to, for another trend, for a transition process, and we could do that. But the intention and on the basis of the interviews, the panel felt that Darren had the potential to move into that, into that chair's role, but definitely not immediately, there would need to be a transition process. So I think that, was there any other background that you wanted to provide, Tim, just as, from a panel perspective?
No, no, I think you've summarised it well.
Okay, cheers. All right, going to questions, Judeine first up and then Stuart and then Matt, then Mel and then Christine.
Cheers. Yeah, so a couple of questions. So just the whole transition process. So when I last spoke with Kath Taylor, she had anticipated staying on or extending her term. And I believe Paul Steer had asked her to, for 12 to 18 months, to actually provide that transition process, both of new members, but also the transition to the holding company. So I'm just wondering why that's not come through in this report for Kath to be able to do that?
Judeine, I haven't had that conversation with, with Paul at all. So Paul's had that conversation with Kath, we're kind of, that wasn't the discussion. I have spoken with Kath in the last six months and Kath had indicated that if we were not, you know, if we felt we had an issue here in relation to chairing, she was willing to continue if that was required. But there hasn't been a, you know, that would be, that would be an option for the shareholders to consider. But at this point, it's Paul who we, who is finishing. And he has certainly stayed on on the board to allow this process to occur.
Yes, in the, in the report, it's got both Paul and Kath finishing October 2022. And so, yes, Paul has already had his term extended, so I was certainly not suggesting extending his term any further. But I was suggesting that, yeah, because Kath has indicated her availability and, and Paul's support, that, yeah, I was wondering why her term wasn't proposed to extend for 12 to 18 months, because that would, you know, I think, you know, we've got two transitions taking place and the loss of Paul and Kath are the two most senior governance members on that board. And all due deference to the existing and people being recommended here today, they've got significantly less and the new ones quite significantly less experience. So I was just wondering why that wasn't a discussion that was had.
Well Judeine, you're telling me things that I haven't got correspondence about, so I'll go across to Nikki to say, do we have, do we have correspondence from Paul telling us that?
No, no, I haven't been aware of that. And the discussions to date have been that Kath will be finishing in October.
Anything at Tasman's end, have you got anything from?
No, and it didn't come through either in the initial discussions with Paul or in the, around the interviews and the opportunity that the airport company had through Matt's involvement in the interviews and subsequent decisions. So it wasn't brought up at all by the airport.
No, I've got a Christine, she's just got her hand up. Any?
Two matters, just a point of clarification, actually, the interview panel through you, Madam Chair, was actually yourself and myself.
Sorry, Christine.
And the other director, so that will just need to be corrected for the official record. All I can offer is a very anecdotal comment and conversation with Kath Taylor. When I saw her in the Richmond Mall a couple of weeks ago, obviously I didn't say anything, but I kind of got the impression from what she said that she thought she was staying on. So I guess I'm just wondering whether we need to go back and have a conversation with the current chair.
Well, Christine, there was nothing, nothing resonant regarding the conversation. I have spoken to Kath directly, which was to say, to, you know, to say, she, she, her conversation was, if we needed her to stay on, she would. If the, if the shareholders needed her, came back and said that they would need her to stay on. At this point, we've got two candidates that we think would work. But what we've done is we've allowed us the flexibility with the membership of the board. So that's the, that's been the discussion.
I'm happy with that, I would just hate there to be a miscommunication.
Okay, I'll go on to my next question then. Just in relation to the selection of Darren Mark to be the person to go in early. So out of the two candidates, or whatever you want to call them, in the paper, the two recommended people in the, in the papers, Emma has significantly more experience, including experience at chairing and also experience in aviation, especially around that critical pricing area. So I'm just wondering why Darren is the recommended person to come in early. Also, when it is the board's, you know, the board chooses the chair, not, not us.
I'll go across to Christine to get your feedback on the interview process.
Okay, so certainly, I think both the candidates have got a lot of capabilities, but in different areas. It was certainly evident to me in the interview process that Emma, I don't recall that she would be seeking the chair's role at all. And that that's not her strength. Darren, on the other hand, whilst he hasn't had a great deal of experience with a board of this size, certainly seemed to me that he had the capability to step into that role over time.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. I didn't, Emma's strength is around the pricing, absolutely. She was, and, and we discussed those attributes, all three panel members would be of the view that, that I wouldn't be recommending, you know, looking at Emma as stepping into that role at this point. But what I think is fair to say is the board does appoint their own chair. But all of the companies that we've worked with come and they have that conversation around that with, as to what they're, they're thinking of. And they usually reach out those decisions by consensus. Occasionally they'll have a vote about it, but usually they've, they've kind of worked their way through that. And there's a very, you know, there's a good logical reason for how they work out their chair's roles. But it is up to the, it is up to the board who they put into that role.
Okay, and my last question for now is just on diversity. We're continuing with just one woman on the board. And so it just feels like this was maybe an opportunity to redress that a bit. And just wondering, you know, especially when these are three-year appointments, why that didn't get a higher rate ranking perhaps?
Christine, I'll come across to you again, just in terms of the candidates we interviewed.
Yeah, well, certainly of the candidates that were interviewed, there was no one that offered diversity that we interviewed over and above the two people that we're recommending, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I'd have to say they were standout in terms of the, the interview process, that they were quite clearly the, the candidates that had the capability. Emma, Emma, we felt we really wanted to get her up onto the board if we could, because we think she's got a lot of value to bring with her prior experience. And, yeah, I'd say that, you know, you know, we do our best on the boards to get diversity, which we are making some progress on, on some of the boards and some, just depending on who applies, we, we don't. But there certainly wasn't a, a thinking that we needed to go out and re-advertise, because we felt that the candidates that we had were bringing real capability to the board.
Okay, thank you.
I'll cross to you, Stuart, and then on to Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel, Mayor Rachel. Just a couple of free questions from myself. Just in relation to the, the notice for applications, was there any particular strengths that were particularly asked for? Particularly around era, you know, era and old article experience? Obviously, sometimes we had particular criteria, we're looking for strengths, was there anything like that? And was that given consideration?
Yes, well, Nikki, can you answer that?
No, through the chair, section 4.6 of the report was proven governance experience. It was potentially advantages by having a background in finance, insurance, risk management, but that would consider different specialisms. So an experience in a dynamic environment of change and disruption is also desirable, combined with a real passion for growth and prosperity of the region.
Right, but nothing specifically from the airport company around a year and old article experience or, or knowledge?
And they didn't specifically request that skill set.
Thank you. And just in relation to the chairing situation that councillor Eggers talked about, was that part of the, the notice as well, where they advised that they may be required to be the chair?
We were looking for good governance experience and Christine, we were hopeful that we would find somebody in this round with chair's capability. But we, if we hadn't, then we had to come up with a, yeah, a plan B. Christine, do you just want to, to the attributes, because the financial capability is quite critical this time too.
Yeah, I think the panel was very clear that they were looking for an experienced and capable chartered accountant. And, and given that, yeah, you're losing two experienced people, that certainly one of them has those capabilities, that that was deemed to be essential. So hence, I think why Darren's appointment is really a great one to, to fill that role.
So if I may, Mayor Rachel, just for you, why were we particularly seeking an accounting experience? Is there no one able to advise the board? Or I wouldn't have thought that was a strength you'd particularly look forward to in a board member? When there's advisors that can do that for the airport company?
We felt that C I K, particularly with around audit risk, was particularly, was critical for us. So that, that audit risk chair function, that was going to be a key part of what we'd be looking for. The, the negotiation processes, the upside of this one is that we've got someone who's really skilled coming in in the financial negotiation with, as well. So that was where we landed, Stuart.
Right. And then I guess my next question, so obviously the selection panel thought there was no one, once Matt Taylor went to the, to the Wellington Airport on the current board that could do the chair's role.
We had sought feedback from the, the, actually from the board chair, the board member who was on the panel. And that feedback was that we should probably look for somebody who could go into the chair's role.
Right. Because I do have some reservations about someone coming on and then after a short time being promoted to the chair, would have thought that people on the board would have had the capability to be the chair for, even if it was only for a shorter term, rather than someone that's recruited for each, but that's only my opinion.
Thanks, Stuart.
Thank you.
Going on to councillor Rachel.
Kia ora koutou, thanks, Madam Mayor, through the chair. So I guess I share quite a few of the questions that Judeine and probably concerns or reservations that Stuart has raised. But I won't repeat questions. I was just curious as to, is there anybody on the board or of the candidates who have been proposed who fakapapas māori?
Emma didn't have been identified with fakapapa at the interview. I don't believe she did. I'd say to pull up her CV though, if I could. But at least you've got it, I'm just doing multi-screens here.
So maybe of the existing board members, as I've just checked on here on LinkedIn, and it looks like Ihaia might be a married name rather than maiden name.
I haven't actually checked with, with the Quentin, around, with the Quintons, around Quentin, I actually don't know the answer to that question. It's a good question though.
Yeah, okay, so I feel like it's pretty important to understand, you know, diversity matrix on a board. I feel quite concerned, well, okay, next thing is, in the job, in the, the job description that went out for the role on the board, was there any reference to that person stepping up into the chair's role? I think Stuart might have asked something like that.
Nikki, I think we're
Chair, it was just recruiting for two directors.
Right, okay. And so, I mean, I guess having, yeah, I guess, how, how often would you expect somebody in a job interview just straight off the bat to kind of say that they're expecting to step into a chair's role? Like, I would think that's pretty plucky and unusual. So I don't think it's kind of, feels a little unfair that we're making some assumption that Emma Ihaia isn't up for that, just because she didn't say that in her job interview, in her interview? Role interview? I just wondered if there's any thoughts on that?
Neither a candidate were asked about the chair's, going into the chair's role at the interview process. I think what the board is looking at, so when Matt Clark's looking at, you know, coming to do, to work through that process, what he's thinking about is, what does that look like in the future? Because we know Paul's going to come off. But ultimately, the board will work that through themselves and come with a recommendation. So, you know, I think, I think there isn't a, at, at the moment, I think that has to work its way through, actually, I can't, councillor Rachel, I really do. But, but on the face of the, on the face of the interview, what Christine and I are saying is, we didn't see or hear the experience, it's kind of that experiential, what would come through when we ask those questions about, you know, leading through a board. We, we didn't, we didn't hear that so much from, from Emma, but she may develop very quickly in that role. It's a very comfortable space for her for aviation, in the aviation sector.
She, she seems to have considerably more kind of board governance experience than the other candidate. So I guess I would be, I'm just wondering what the options are for bringing her on first, rather than Darren Marks?
Well, it's up to the joint shareholders committee today. So you get so many recommendations, but it's really up to the committee to decide what they want to do.
Okay, so I'm probably just indicating that I would be quite keen to amend the recommendation if possible, to change that around. Thanks, no more questions at the moment.
Okay, we'll move on to Mel, and then we've got a mayor term.
Thank you, Rachel. I might dart all over the place, I'll try and keep some sort of semblance of order in what I'm asking here. But was in, and the number comes out of my head from a memory, was there no one else, was it no one amongst the 32 people, applicants, that had some strong business experience? Christine or Rachel or Tim?
There were, there were candidates that had business experience, but my least into people when they went through and did the rating. These were in our top, you know, how you'll get on the sort of the tops, the ones to consider, they know, you know, maybe another layer and then the unsuitable. So these are your candidates that were in the, the top rating, I think, Christine? But I'd have to pull those documents up. I'm wondering if we might have moved Emma up, actually. I think we did, Christine.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Look, I can't comment. I filled in for Tim at the interview stage, not the shortlisting stage. What I can say of the people that we interviewed, I'm of the view that actually Darren will be an outstanding director and using the capabilities that he brings, and that Emma has a completely different skill set. And, and she will be great there as well. So as opposed to, I think there were shortcomings with the other two people that we interviewed.
Thank you, Christine, for that.
Do you want me to just, just add about the shortlisting? Yeah, I mean, yes, there were quite a few people, but I wouldn't have characterised it as the strongest pool of applicants I've ever seen for a council entity director role. So I don't think it was, it didn't present a huge number of options for the shortlisting and ultimately the interviews. And I guess coming back to the diversity question that's been asked a couple of times, that's also one of the, the challenges, that you are very dependent on the, the range of applicants. And they have to be able to tick the boxes around capability and experience, et cetera, as well as the diversity issues. I don't see it as an either or question. And so I think it was one of the more challenging pools to identify four really good candidates from. And it's interesting to hear Christine's point about the fact that the two that have been proposed were probably stood out from the other two that ultimately were interviewed.
Thank you, Tim, and it helped, Christine's remarks helped as well.
It just, I have got, I have got the list here. So, so yes, that, that we, we did move Emma, we moved, yeah, we liked it, we liked the look of Emma. So we gave her an interview and she was, she, because she wasn't in that, she wasn't in the sort of initial shortlist space. She is, she isn't, she does bring, she is in a She is, she isn't, she does bring, she is an economist, so she brings that, she brings that economic background. And strong in his commercial manager role from Network Tasman. But she wasn't a C A and we were particularly in that process, looking for someone to come through with that really strong accounting background, which is what Darren bought through as well as his other governance roles.
And that was clearly requested by the airport company.
Yes, it was.
So that was absolute, they were absolutely clear that they wanted someone with that level of financial expertise and experience.
Yeah. We did, just in terms of diversity, we did, we did interview two men and two women. And in this case, it was, as I said, there was a strong differentiation between the top two candidates and the other two candidates. I, you know, there was a real gap between them.
Thanks for all of those explanations. That's very helpful. You see, my point is, when I ask about a business background, is that whoever goes into the chair is placing, replacing Paul, who has an incredibly strong business background going over decades. And the board, I think, is weaker for that. Therefore, just to signal, we're only giving, we're only talking over the kitchen table here, aren't we? We're not, I, I think Kath Taylor should be retained if she's signaling to two two of our people here today that she's, you know, expecting to be. That's my thought on that. I do like the look of Emma, I really do. And no worries, no, no worries about that. And Mark is an incredible guy, certainly. But I would like to see someone with business experience there. And, you know, we're not just nice guys, we're into people with a strong business background. It is a business and therefore it should, and there doesn't appear to be anyone that can fill that role anywhere near the extent that Paul does. That's just some thoughts there. Tell me about Matt Clark. When did he indicate, you know, you must, must have been thought on the board that he would be a chair at some point. Is that correct?
Matt came for his strong aviation background, also he lives in the region. So he's pretty passionate about this place. He flies across to Wellington for his work, lives here. He my personal view, and I'm conscious that he's not the subject of today's discussion. So that my personal view is a very capable, very capable director. And I think he would have a future as a, as a potential chair, but that would be quite difficult. Well, he's the C E of, he's just taken on the role of a very big role in aviation as the chief executive of Wellington Airport. And so I think he would be committing his time to that role rather than chairing Nelson Airport. I'm not sure that would be a good mix either.
So we missed a lot, a great opportunity there, didn't we?
Well, no, I think, I think he got a great opportunity to be appointed as the chair of the chief executive.
And we missed one, we missed one, getting him as chair of the airport company, didn't we? So there's my thoughts. Kath Taylor should be retained, I think. The board is going to be quite weak going into a very difficult transition period. And I just think you need experience there, so she should be retained. Emma, I just like so much about her, happy with that. And I'd just like us to drag our feet a little bit on Mark, but I know the guy and I, he's a great guy. And everything that Christine said is correct, but it's just strong business. You know, qualities that he, that I would like to see the chair have. And I'm not just convinced that he has them. I emphasize the strong and acumen, I think was the word I was desperately trying to think of. So that's my thoughts on it, I think, at this stage, Rachel. Thank you.
I'll come back to, I think, Mel, I'll come back to you, Tim, and then Brian and Judeine again. And we'll see how we go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess ultimately it's a decision of the, of the committee. But I'd just like to point out, the people have been through and interviewed and gone through the shortlist and interviewed the people and made the recommendation, working with the airport company on their required skill set and mix, including having you know, them involved in the interview and recommendation process. So, yeah, I guess it's the committee's decision. But whether we need to check out the Kath Taylor thing, I mean, again, that's not something that came up at any point. I mean, Paul Steer, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel, was involved in the shortlisting conversations. And it was only the second part that Matt stepped into. Or it might have been the long listing, the initial conversation about directors that provided this feedback came from Paul. And I, I don't remember that coming up at all in that conversation. So, but whether, whether we'd like, if that's the committee's view and we need to go back and revisit that, I guess that's just what we'll have to do.
No, the process is that the board chairs let us know if a, if a candidate would like to be reconsidered for, what would like to be considered for an extension. Because they know that we're, you know, we're looking at those terms. Because by now, we have another recruitment process just about started. So I haven't, I'm just checking now to see, I can't see anything at all from Paul Steer saying to me that Kath Taylor is seeking another term at all. Moving on to Brian.
Yeah, some of the questions, I suppose, some aspects have already been asked and answered. Just in terms of the, was it thirty, thirty-three applicants? Was there a long listing and a shortlisting process carried out?
No, this time they were, as Tim said, the caliber of candidates was well, it was, it was strong enough to be able to sort it out in one go. So we managed to go, go through and go, actually, we don't need to do a, another round. I'm just double check on that.
Through you, Madam Mayor.
That's correct, yes, it was, yeah.
Right, yeah. So I'm looking at the two recommendations and the rest of the board as a whole. And I'm just trying to think, I don't know much about, is it Quinton, is it Quinton Hall? Does he fire, does he have a Naitahu faka papa or?
Correct, he's worked for Naitahu.
So he came with a really strong, so, so setting aside his faka papa. But one of his key strengths was obviously tourism related business. And also a really strong connection via both working for Naitahu in their tourism space. But also in that whole Iwi engagement and experience place. So that was two of his key strengths and hence the reason for his appointment in that round.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, you know, at board as a whole, we know Matt, with his infrastructure background at the port, Matt with his airport background. And I think we've got Mark, well, I suppose, his business experience and then Emma with her regulatory background, I think it's reasonably, reasonably comfortable, well-rounded board with skills from, you know, the appropriate areas. So, but concerned about some of these conversations, well, not concerned, but in these sort of inner conversations we have with Kath Taylor. But I might, I have to rely on what the, the Paul Steer has brought to us, which is that's where I am at the moment, so.
Thank you, Brian. Back to Judeane and then Kat and Christine.
Thank you. So when the advertising was done for these roles, did the board know, did the airport board know, or did we know that we were looking for two candidates?
We were, yes, we knew we were going to have to come through to a term coming, you know, to a conclusion recently soon, that there was a, there was another term of a board member coming up. But we, if we can, and we've done that before, so we've done that for N R D A and we've done it for P O, actually, do we do that for the not for the port, we did another one recently. If we get candidates that we think have got capability and we know something's coming up, we will go, well, you go into the market. You know, if you're going a month, a few months later and you've got two people that are good, then you, you do try and, try and get them if you can. But it's not always possible.
I think we did do it to the port, didn't we? I think we did appoint two people to the port at one point, out of one, out of one process.
Oh, we did, yeah, we did one recruitment. Yeah, we, yeah, we did, because that's, that's going to be a really nice succession, you know, transition planning through, succession planning through.
Yeah, so the reason I asked is just Christine sort of highlighted the skills they were looking for. But I just wondered, following up on Mel's point, if some of the skills might have been different if they knew it was for two different positions. Because you've got two people with financial background and not the commercial background, not the aviation background, et cetera. So whether the skill mix would have been different if they'd specifically known that this was two positions.
Well, Judean, I can just think that Emma comes with a fantastic commercial background. She comes with huge skill in that, in that space. So I, I think she, it's really commercial. That was one of the things that we liked about her. So I think she's, and why we moved her up. So I, I think Brian's comment before is, you're sitting, when you're sitting doing it, you're looking at the skills, mixes of the skill sets you're going to need. Thinking about what that looks like as a whole. And then you always have some restrictions in terms of, you know, who can move into chair's role. At the moment, we don't have a, you know, you wouldn't look at this saying, you know, they're going to work that through. That's one of the reasons we're asking to get another director on there at the moment.
And so just following up Mel's point, what would be the process to discuss, I assume, with the board chair? A potential extension, you know, one year, eighteen months. Oh, sorry, to Kath Taylor's appointment to support the transition process.
Was that a question for the officers?
Yeah.
So through the chair, I suppose at this, I mean, you've got two choices. You could let, let the matter lie for the next Joint Shareholders Committee meeting, which I think we're trying to get one on the seventh of June and actually deal with it all together. Or you could just pass the resolution in relation to Darren. But it's whether or not you want to separate those decisions or consider them as a package, given it's, you know, board composition.
Sorry, I'm not quite sure where that, that leaves us. So, okay, so for example, could we do the suite of recommendations that are here today? And add a resolution to extend Kath's term for, say, eighteen months, subject to you know, whether it's discussion with the board or, you know, what would be the, you know, you know, what, what would be that process of discussion or whatever? And, yeah.
Well, to be honest, Judean, I've been, we're going to start to feel really uncomfortable about this. Because this is sort of like hearsay, hearsay, and I just don't really feel like that's a good process. I have talked directly with Kath Taylor in this process. And our conversation was, if she was needed, she would be happy to extend. It wasn't, I haven't had any note from the chair to say, you know, you know, if it, if it was needed. Because essentially, we, Paul does, Paul does wish to step down. You know, so, so we've got him, he stayed longer than he's been wanting to step down for, for a while. He stayed because as, as Mel said before, he has a wealth of knowledge that we, we were wanting to retain through this transition process. But, I mean, I almost feel like I need to adjourn this meeting a good quarter round and see what's going on. But I, I feel very awkward doing that off the back of, of side conversations between, you know, I do feel awkward about that. So I'll probably just
Discussion with the chair.
Well, I can, well, no, I've hit it, well, nothing's come to us through that process. So essentially, what you were saying is you've had a conversation with Kath Taylor, we had a conversation with Paul Steer. And I'm, yeah, at least, look, these are, I'll get the rest of the questions and we'll maybe see what we want to do about this. So I can take a brief adjournment, see if I can call them, but see if we can get to the bottom of this. Kat?
Well, my view is that I'm happy with the recommendations. If you look at the mix of the board and I support what Brian said, and I remember when we appointed Quinton, because he was a Tasman District Council representative and he came with a, a good tourism background and a good connection with Iwi. I look at Matt Clark, who's got extensive background at the Wellington Airport, and then I look at the two new people. And to be honest, our airport is not that big or that complicated compared to some other businesses. And I think we need to take that on board. So, look, if you wanted someone to remove the recommendation, I've got the cat in the pool and I'd move it now. Because I'm happy with the recommendations and where we're going. And I don't think we need to extend Kath Taylor's appointment, simple as that. So I'm happy to move if you want to accept it now, before the questions are finished.
Well, I think that's, I maybe to accept that now and I'll go to Christine and we'll see. We won't, we won't be the lapsing process, I'll just, that's right with everyone, but we'll just do it. Christine and David, hear from them.
Thank you very much through the chair. I'm happy to second the resolution. I did just want to make a comment. Look, I feel that, you know, people have made comments about the various candidates based on they might know them or they've read their information. I found the, I found the selection process, recruitment process to be robust. It was great having met there as part of the panel, who was able to really think about the whole composition of the board and, and how people bought skills that, that might be needed. The interview process is made up of people's CVs, it's made up, we had Zoom interviews. And we also had referee checks. And, and that's a lot of information considered by, by the interview panel. So I, I feel that the recommendation is supported by a robust process. And I agree with Kat, I think they'll be a great board.
Thanks, thanks, Christine. Let's come back to Judean.
Yeah, I'd like to move an amendment that number two, resolution two says Emma Ahaya and number three says Darren Mark.
I second that.
Right, so we moved and seconded. Not any debates, or do you want to just move straight into voting?
Did you bring up the, I'm working electronically.
Getting up the resolution, okay.
A question, just that we get clarity on what the actual, what we're voting on, please, just. To know what it is.
I think that is, if we put it up on, I don't know, can you share a screen, Robin? An amendment there, or is it possible?
Yes, just be with.
Thank you. Robin, a couple of minutes.
Should be able to see that now.
We can. So that's what's the, that's the amendment. It's been moved and seconded, so shouldn't be any questions. It's very, sorry, are there any question, well, I'll check, are there any questions first? Questions, anyone to speak to that? Christine, you've got your hand up. Are you on mute, Christine?
Sorry, 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 yes, I'm on mute through you, Madam Chair. I, I did want to speak to it. I, my recollection is that if the interview panel had been put in a position where they were going to recommend one person to be appointed to the board, it would have been Darren and not Emma. And, um, so, um, I, you know, I won't be supporting the amendment to the resolution because I, I don't think that it was consistent with, with where we got to.
Thanks, Christine. Um, Judean?
Um, yeah, just, uh, speaking in favor of the resolution, um, Emma brings significant commercial experience. She brings aviation experience. She has, uh, more governance experience. This still doesn't guarantee, um, that she will be chair, uh, because that is a decision that the board themselves will make. This is a decision just on time and thank you.
Anybody else should speak to it? Uh, look, I, I'm not, I'm going to speak to, I can't support that, um, on the basis of having, um, gone through the process, the full process, having interviewed, uh, actually seen all of the candidates that applied, um, gone through the um, interview process, um, having, um, all of the reference checks and thinking about the composition of the board and having discussed that with the, um, with the board representatives. Um, I'm, there's nothing in here that gives me concern that the reference checks were extremely strong. And they're, in my view, the order that we're putting them up is in the right order. We've left provision on the board for an extra director and, um, and that process will move through over the next few months. And if they feel, the board feel that they don't have sufficient, um, chairs capability, then they will come back to us and seek to retain another direct, uh, a director to continue. It will be my expectation. So I'm going to put it.
I'm just going to call a division.
Robyn, do you have any of those sheets? You don't use those at TDC, do you?
I can do it electronically, so, yes.
Fairly enough, we do have the odd division.
Oh, do you? Oh, we have, I mean, very much information. Kath has a stack of them some days, don't you expect? All right, where we go?
I will call the division, but please, apologies, I'll just see, call you as I see you on the screen. Mary.
I know.
Uh, Mayor, sorry, councillor Courtney.
Aye.
Councillor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Edgar.
Aye, that's all right. Aye.
Deputy Mayor Bryant.
Four.
Councillor Dowler.
Four.
Councillor Noonan.
Aye.
Councillor Simpson, I didn't forget you this time.
Aye, thanks.
Councillor McGurk.
Uh, no.
Councillor Mackenzie.
No.
Councillor Ogilvie.
No.
Councillor Mayling.
No.
Mayor Kang.
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, four. It's a tie.
Just what we didn't need.
What are your standing orders saying?
How's that have a casting vote?
Well, neither do ours. No, ours don't either.
There you go. So, so does that revert to the, oh, I don't know, the status quo, which means the motion remains the same, does it?
Right.
Well, I don't know that it does actually. It means that, it means that someone's going to have to flex or we're going to have to put this to a, um, we're going to have to put this, uh, June for a minute while I can make some phone calls to see if I can get some clarity from the board chair. It seemed to me that, well, it depends whether you're being influenced by the fact that you think Kath Taylor has indicated that she wishes to, to stay on the board and she's told Paul Skier that and that hasn't been communicated to us essentially. Whether my conversation was prior to that conversation, she's had a change of heart. If that's what's.
Is that, is that relevant, relevant to this?
I, I, I didn't.
Ultimately, we, if we appoint these two people in whatever order and the board decides they don't have sufficient experience.
They'll let us know.
They could make a choice to continue to run one director, one extra director.
Yes, they can.
Chair is theirs.
I would have thought so. I would have thought that's what we've talked through before, but I just get a strong feeling that there was, um, that was a range of questions in that regard. Councillor Brian and then Councillor Ogilvie.
Thank you. So just a couple of things I do wonder, uh, it was talked about earlier on, should we let the matter lie on the table to the seventh of June? And revisit it then when we would have further information? Or if I was assured that the board would be making the decision rather than us, um, I would possibly change my vote.
Um, I don't think there'll be any further information, uh, Stuart, but the board does make the vote. Uh, there's no, they vote on it. Um, you remember the, the port, the porch, the port did have a vote last time, I think, for their, for their appointment of their chair. So no, they let us know who it is. Usually, usually there's, usually they've, they've, they've all sort of sorted out who it's going to be and there's that conversation that goes on, but that's, that's still they decide.
Right, as it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, as it should be, yeah. Thank you.
So if you're comfortable with that, I can redo the vote within a moment with that reassurance. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, would someone care to move the recommendation in the report? Christine, you have been, oh, you've moved that, oh, you've moved and seconded it, haven't you? So, so that was the amendment. So we're back, actually we are, we're back to the substantive. So the memo as well.
I'm going to call a division on the substantive, thanks.
Yep. So.
Let's let Robyn get organized. She'll be ready in a minute.
Okay.
So just for clarity, Rachel, um, is that the, uh, resolution that's now on the agenda, is it?
It's the one on the agenda, Stuart, yes it is. So it's just in the order that they were, came out on the agenda.
Deputy Mayor Bryant.
Four. I had to think about this, Robyn.
Councillor Courtney.
No.
Councillor Dowler.
Four.
There.
Councillor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Edgar, I'll get it right one day, Judean.
No.
Mayor Kang.
Four.
Councillor Mackenzie.
Four.
Councillor Mayling.
Four.
Councillor McGurk.
Four.
Councillor Noonan.
No.
Councillor Ogilvie.
Four.
Councillor Reese, sorry, Mayor Reese.
I shall be fine, Robyn, yes.
Councillor Simpson.
No.
The resolution is carried.
Yeah, Mayor Tim's in that one. Just got us, did you vote, Tim?
Yeah, yeah, I did. It was earlier and earlier in the piece.
Okay. Apologies, Robyn. Okay, that is now carried. All right. So that is the, um, confidential matters concluded. And we'll now move out of confidential business. So I will move this out, seconded by Councillor Ogilvie. Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Against, carried, we're now back in session and we're ready to close the meeting. Tim, would you like to, to close? You're just on mute, Tim? I think, oh, maybe not, hang on. Would you like to, would you like to close with Karakia, Tim?
You're on mute, Tim.
I think he's on.
Yeah, good to go. Yeah, I am. I am. I wasn't anticipating being on here for an hour or five.
You've got an office on the car.
I'm already late for the next thing. So it's all good. I will close. Kia maki nā kina kītū kaute, kia mata rata rata kaitai, ehi aki, an ate atukura, te hio, te huka, te hauhu, tēhe, maori ora.
Maori ora. Thanks, Tim. All right, now, so just briefly, um, we're in the process of just, just working through the, um, independent chair, independent chair. Yes, it is a chair, I'm thinking what I'm allowed to say then at the moment, independent chair of the, um, hold, infrastructure, holding company process. And, um, we need to be able to communicate with the, um, as we go through the long list, short list process a little bit more about how that's all going to come together. And so there's a bit of a chicken and egg issue that we just, we talked through yesterday. Um, the chair of the chairs of both of the companies are sitting on that, on that panel. Um, we thought that was.
All right, right.
I'll just see if we can mute councillor.
You're looking for a JP, are you?
Robyn, have you, have you got the mute function? Oh, thank you. Um, so we, we just talked through it yesterday. And so one of the things that we, we just, um, in terms of, you, you flesh this out as well if I miss things, just in terms of the process. What we're thinking could be quite useful is to appoint, um, essentially point, point somebody as the, um, interim chair, chair elect to, so that that person can be participating in the, sort of the establishment discussions of the holding company. Because essentially, um, we think there could be value in that person being able to work with us as councils around, um, what we, you know, bringing that whole transition process together, building the strong relationship that we need is someone who's going to be the, the chair of the company that we own. Um, so we thought we'd just, just had that discussion today. Melissa's sort of waiting to, um, work through that process to answer questions from the, the candidates that we, we're shortlisting at the moment. So, Tim, um, is that, that's sort of the gist of it really, wasn't it, to go through that? And what we're thinking is that, that essentially there'll be sort of an establishment phase where we've still got quite a lot to do in terms of putting together all the documentation, what the structure looks like, all of those pieces that we've, Nelson City Council have been talking about for the last period. And it would be helpful to have that independence, independent chair director actually participating in that process. Um, I have got, um, a sense that you'd like a sort of bigger separation from perhaps the port and airport staff providing that and putting, you'd actually like that independence as we go through to the person that the company, that the shareholders were building the relationship with. So we just thought we'd sound you out about that today before those conversations commenced. That would mean that that person would have a, a perhaps a bigger, um, more of a consultancy role to councils, a bigger role initially and be more involved in the discussions with you as joint shareholders than had been anticipated and just someone being put into, established into the role and then doing the court, that sort of meeting process. Tim, is there anything you want to add? I think I've got the, that was the sort of the guts of what we talked about.
Yeah, I mean, given this is largely driven by concerns from Nelson City councillors around, um, the company then, that, that was the conversation, that if it helped, um, provide some confidence that we could appoint the person as a, as a, I guess, a chair elect as opposed to making an appointment that would obviously only come into fruition at the point in time where the council's made a decision to form the company. If that was going to add value and provide a degree of comfort or an ability for people to, um, gets what might be seen as more independent advice, then it was just something we wanted to get people's feedback on, that's all.
Um, Judean?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, happy to, um, start the ball rolling. Um, I do, uh, like this approach. It is a more standard approach, uh, to actually have the independent chair in early. Um, I think something that has been, um, for me, missing in the processes to date has been that governance level thinking. Uh, there has been, you know, lots of solid management level thinking, but, um, there hasn't been that governance level. And to set up the holding company, there actually needs to be really good understanding of governance. And to ensure that the holding company is successful, you actually need to set up that establishment and activation of that holding company board is actually one of the critical decisions. So I think, uh, this is an important, um, step to take, so I'm wholly supportive. Um, I just have some questions and it may or may not be for today, but that's just on the, I guess, efficacy of the recruitment process for the independent chairperson. Um, the fact there was no job description up, there was sort of eight sentences on the I O D website. Um, you know, so have we done a robust, um, recruitment process? That may not be for today, that last question, but, um, supportive of the approach that you have outlined, um, Madam Mayor.
Well, I think, I think the answer to that is, it has been challenging for Melissa because the shareholders are still in the, actually that, that is, that sorting out the how it's all going to fit together and that's the chicken and egg part of it, of going, well, which is, which is kind of where we got to, to go, well, actually having a independent chair elect would be quite useful because there's still all the, you know, the constitution hasn't been, you know, we haven't reached, you know, we haven't gone through all the pieces that we need to do as yet. So there is that process, but in, in terms of the caliber, in terms of the caliber of candidates that have come forward, they're pretty jolly strong.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the, one of the great ironies is that actually the, the, the standard of candidates for the holding company is dramatically better than the standard of the, which, it's just interesting observation. I think Melissa's concern is that because of the brevity of the job description, that she needs to go back to those who were longlisted and basically give them a much clearer understanding of what the expectation is. Because clearly if there is a role that we've just kind of discussed around that initial, almost a consultancy, pre-taking up the role, role, that may require a greater time commitment than given the number, the, most of these candidates are extremely busy, um, with significant governance roles. So whether they are all keen to be involved in that kind of initial stage and the time that that may involve, Melissa just needs that information to be able to go back to work through. But certainly from what we've seen in the long listing process, um, I don't have any issue with the quality of candidates that have put their hand forward. In fact, I'd say it's probably better than any that we've seen for either the ports or airports, um, for some time in terms of that caliber of candidates.
Fantastic. I definitely agree with that. Very strong, very strong. So sometimes, sometimes brevity is actually quite useful for getting people to pick up, have the conversation. So this is a, there is some degree, um, of opportunity here, but it will, will depend. Some of those candidates, as Tom said, have got, um, significant governance portfolios and they may not be able to commit the time to doing a, um, essentially a sort of consultancy role for us in that tier elite process. But, um, we felt that actually there was, that was a real value proposition. If we find none of them are interested in doing it, then we might have to come back to you with a, a different, a different proposal. Any other questions? Comments? All, all good. So are you happy if we proceed on that basis? If not, yep. What was that, thumbs up on that? Anyone not? Oh, good. Okay, excellent. Okay, well, that's us done for today. It's good. I've just spoken, was on an MFA call, letting them know it's coming to joint committees. I've just been discussing area reform and, um, how long we took to go through this meeting and what it's going to be when I go back on. It's going to be a bit of a, a test of whether, um, uh, the joint councils working jointly is, as they go or not. I did explain to them it was an extremely long agenda, so I might not be there before they finish the meeting. Right, I'll see you later. Have a lovely rest of your day. We, you may be heading next. Thanks, Robyn.
Robyn.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Bye.